Entitled A Prayer for Health Workers. Angels in blue gowns, they wear face masks instead of halos. Their gloved holy hands administer to us care we are too weak to provide for ourselves. Often without sleep, without hope of a day off, in the face of ever dwindling supplies. They risk their lives at every moment in order to save others. Blessed are the hands rub raw from washing that connects people to ventilators. Blessed are the feet sore and swollen that tread the ER floors. Blessed are the eyes that have stared down death hundreds of times. And yet they look upon each desperately ill patient and refuse to give up hope. God most merciful, preserve the health and safety of those who work so hard to preserve the lives of others. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. So I've asked Bob and Tim and Patty and Bob to join us tonight. I told them it's a very informal gathering, a very receptive fellow parishioners. And nothing formal, but just a conversation, a chance to talk about how the coronavirus has impacted them and the patients that they serve. And maybe we have some questions for them as well. If later on, after their presentations, you have questions, we'll unmute ourselves and have a chance to ask those. So I would ask Bob and Tim and Patty and Bob to unmute yourselves at this time. And maybe if, Bob, Mooney, you're here, right?
I'm here.
You're here, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Oh, there you are, okay. Bob, maybe you might begin. If you tell us, you know, where you work and, you know, the medical profession you work in and the location of your practice and then whatever you want to share with us about our current situation.
Certainly, thanks for inviting me. So for those of you who know me, you know that I spent many years working in the emergency department at Kaiser in Walnut Creek. Also, I used to work quite a bit at Kaiser in Antioch as well as Oakland. I retired from the emergency department after thirty-one years, three years ago, and transitioned to an easier practice in urgent care. So I've been working in urgent care at StatMed in Lafayette and Pleasant Hill. And along the way, I developed a concussion program. So I take care of concussion patients and went into some extra training to do that. And I've managed about two hundred concussion patients over the last few years. And it's been a nice experience for me because as an emergency physician, I never had continuity of care with my patients. And now I do. So I'm able to manage patients over the course of weeks and months and help them recover from their concussions. In terms of what happened with the coronavirus event, it was pretty shocking. I had been through various pandemics before. The flu comes around every year. I remember SARS, I remember H1N1, the Ebola scare. They all, each carried their sense of fear and preparation and some tragedy. And I didn't really believe that this COVID-19 was going to be as big a deal as it turned out. And I was wrong. It turned out to be a very big deal. Early on, several members of my urgent care group came down with the illness. And one of them became very sick, almost wound up in the hospital and kind of turned the corner. And he told me his personal story, and he's about ten years younger than me. And he said, Bob, this is no joke. You know, I was so drained of energy and out of breath, I was a hair's breadth away from going to the ER. And then finally, things turned and I got better. I've known of other colleagues who are still working in the emergency departments. And a few of them have become critically ill and actually were intubated. So I dodged the bullet in that sense. I've been out of the ER the past few years. But I became concerned about my safety working in urgent care, particularly after one of my best friends got so sick. We came up with telemedicine as one of the things to do. We didn't even have a telemedicine practice until COVID-19 came along. And it met a real need. It allowed patients who were too scared to go to urgent care to get some help. And it allowed older doctors like me to step away from the clinical practice, at least in part, and take some of the risk off ourselves while serving some patients doing telemedicine. So that's been an interesting journey. I also joined a national telemedicine group. And with the national experience, I'll speak to a patient in Brooklyn, New York. Then I'll speak to someone in Florida, then in Pennsylvania, then in Chicago. And many of them were very sick with COVID-19. And I kind of helped them make decisions about whether they needed to go to the hospital. And so it's kind of brought me a good, a better sense of America in terms of the broad sweep of people and their attitudes about healthcare. So it's been quite a journey for me and for my urgent care practice. And we're still trying to contend with it. We've come up with testing for COVID-19. And a lot of patients are very interested in that. And so it's, again, it's serving a need for the community, I hope. No one really knows what having antibodies mean when you have antibodies for COVID-19. There's a hope that it's sort of a golden ticket back to work so that you don't pose such a risk to your coworkers or maybe to your family if you have antibodies to COVID-19. And maybe that's true. But we don't know for sure. And it's an uncertain future down the road. But we're trying to meet people's needs in that way, too. So that's kind of my short experience.
Bob, could you say a word about telemedicine? I, for one, am not that, you know, familiar or clear with, you know, how it works. I'm not sure if others have experienced that or taken advantage of that. How does that?
Well, it was new to me. I never did it until three months ago. But it actually is remarkably effective in terms of the breadth and the scope of diagnoses that I can make based on a patient's history. Dr. Gany and Dr. Buckley can both tell you that most of our diagnosis is made by the patient's history. And for those of us with experience listening to their story, usually will give us a lot of useful information to point us in the direction of making their diagnosis. And then with telemedicine, it's a video visit most of the time. So the patients can show us their rashes or take a deep breath or, you know, show us their throat. And we can see what we need to see most of the time to make the proper diagnosis or at least come up with a differential diagnosis in just a few minutes. And then we can prescribe what they need electronically. They pretty much preloaded their pharmacy into the system so that I'll just send an electronic order for antibiotics or what have you that they might need. So it's pretty user-friendly. And I've been very impressed with how much I can help patients. And I think it's here to stay. I mean, in our practice, we're going to continue to have this combined platform of both in-person clinic visits and telemedicine going forward, even after the pandemic is over. Because it's quite clear how useful this is to many patients.
Do you see a lot of, I mean, things now are working at a rapid pace. I read an article today that compared the race for a vaccine for the virus compared to the race for the moon. You know, that's how intense it's going now. Are there other kinds of developments like the telemedicine that are taking place at a faster pace because of facing COVID?
Well, I don't work in the inpatient units anymore. But I've read a lot about what my colleagues are doing. And there's, you know, there's a lot of experimentation, trying to keep people off ventilators and trying to get people through the illness in spite of ventilators. Early on, in Italy, eighty percent of patients who were put on ventilators died. And now, through the last three months or four months on the American side, I have one of my good friends from medical school is a pulmonologist at UCLA. And he told me last week that in his practice at UCLA, it's the opposite now. Eighty percent of the patients who were put on ventilators survived. And that's been through a lot of learning on their part in terms of how to do it. And maybe the effect of the antiviral drugs like Remdesivir. But, you know, it's a very rapid learning curve that the inpatient physicians and the intensivists are going through, learning how to make people or help people survive, even though they get critically ill. So I've been trying to keep on top of that as much as I can.
Yeah, it's a lot of information, isn't it, coming at us pretty rapidly? Great. Well, thank you, Bob. After we're towards the end, we can have questions. And I'd ask anybody, you know, that's listening in, if you have a question, make note of it. And then we'll spend some time afterwards. And Patty, if you don't mind, you had to juggle your profession and also your two kids' distance learning from some perpetua's during the last few months. So you had a double whammy, huh?
Hello, everyone. Yes, but I feel fortunate enough to have a stay-at-home husband who is able to spend full time with our children and, you know, take care of the household. Actually, I'm a hospitalist, internal medicine at Southern Delta in Antioch. And I belong with Southern East Bay Medical Group. Actually, I've worked with Dr. Gany at Southern Delta. So I'm a full-time hospitalist. I've been with Southern East Bay Medical Group for, going on eight years now. And I'm also the chief of staff-elect in our hospital, chair of med clinic. So I've been active with administrative work. And so I've seen the evolution right from the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Actually, I also have family in Hong Kong who witnessed the beginnings of the pandemic over there in Southeast Asia, and have family in the Philippines. So it's like a mixture of, like, personal, professional witnessing of how this infection evolved. So like, Dr. Mooney said, it is a big learning curve, especially in the beginning when there was a lot of uncertainty, especially in the inpatient side. Because we feel that, you know, we get the patients right from the beginning. And you stay with them. Actually, I was the, I think I'm the first hospitalist there to take care of coronavirus patients on the outside of the intensive care unit. At that time, when it started, I had three patients. And they were three different levels of acuity. One was an elderly patient who initially didn't present in a severe manner. Then it just eventually evolved. And then I had a young patient who initially presented not with an infection, actually, but with a heart attack, but eventually also had tested positive and who eventually did well. And another one who was barely, who barely had any symptoms. And so we had, I had a great experience, you would say, of seeing how the practice has evolved in the inpatient side and how we, we had, we have a really good infectious disease support in our hospital. And they have helped us navigate through this pandemic. I feel that although it's a small hospital in Delta, in Antioch, I feel that we were well-prepared because right from the beginning, we were very proactive. I'm very proud of the medical staff in our hospital. They were very proactive in trying to just give information, support. Actually, in the beginning, physicians were approaching me as to how we can prepare in terms of educating ourselves with the, because a lot of physicians who are not intensivists have, they feel that they had to brush up on ventilator support and things like that that they haven't done in their practices for a while. Actually, kudos to Tim Gany's group. His partners were actually very proactive in that respect. And we would gather, we had like, initially like a weekly thing wherein we would have kind of like an informal education wherein we'll have the pulmonologists, intensivists, give us like a refresher course on ventilator support in case we have to, we have to be called in to take care of patients that cannot be handled anymore by our critical care doctors. So everybody has stepped in, chipped in. So it was a nice coming together of our medical community in Antioch. The, a lot of the treatment has evolved. We do try to keep to the evidence-based treatment, but there really isn't a lot of evidence-based literature regarding this. We're all just learning as we gather more information. So it's, so if somebody, if somebody tells you that we have new information every day, that is very true. Even just with the personal protective equipment, the use of it, what to use, has evolved from the beginning up to this point. So it really keeps you on your toes. And you really have to motivate yourself to continue to learn and accept all the new findings as they come along.
Well, good. Yes. Did you have to set aside a lot of other work that you had been doing and patients that you were dealing with and someone in order to focus primarily on the virus?
Actually, no, I had to step up, like, I had to add more work, more time because I didn't, well, as physicians, we didn't have the luxury of actually trying to scale down our practice, especially during this time of need. So our, actually, my hospitalist group, we had to make ourselves more available in preparation, like, if there was a surge of patients that would come. So we had to ramp up our availability. Aside from that, I was very active in, well, I still am very active in the preparation of the hospital. And now that we're in the face of a different kind of surge that we're expecting, wherein there's a going back into the practice. Outpatient practices are opening up and seeing more patients. So now we're seeing a higher number of patients coming into the ER. And actually, I was just on call last night. And there was a decreased number of admissions last night. So that is ramping up. So this is a different kind of ramping up that we're trying to prepare for.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I can't imagine the hours that you put in and the challenge that you've been facing. You mentioned Dr. Gany. So Tim, would you share with us some of the insights and work that this epidemic has created?
Sure. So I literally took Father John by what he said, that this was informal. Also, I have been drinking a glass of wine while this has been going on.
Well, I was going to suggest that don't look too closely into the screens because a lot of these people are on medicine, red or white medicine. Step away from the screen, you'll know.
Okay.
Don't forget to tell them where you work.
Yeah, sure. So most of you know me. My name's Tim Gany. Liz and I and our family have been in the pair since 1995. With a short hiatus back to the East Coast for about six or seven months, then we came back. Kids have all been through the school there and, you know, it's just been a great thing for us being part of the same perpetua community. I'm a medical oncologist by trade. Our practice, I belong in a multi-specialty practice. So we have pediatricians, infectious disease, primary care, family practice, internal medicine, general surgery, breast surgery, radiation oncology, medical oncology, endocrinology. Physicians all in the practice. And we have offices throughout the entire East Bay, basically from Hayward to Antioch. And I've had the pleasure of working with Bob Buckley and Patty over the years. And no Bob personally, but because of the, he being with Kaiser, we just never interfaced professionally. So I would echo kind of what Patty and Bob have said so far. When I look back, the things that were kind of amazing was how quickly this happened, how broadly we were all affected and how ill-prepared we were. I just think when I look back, the scope of the magnitude of the impact on entire medical community was very far-reaching. When we got the shelter-in-place notice, right away, we have quite a few employees that were affected themselves that were felt to be at high risk. So they could not work. We have a fair number of families or employees that both the parents work or both their partners work. And with the impact on schools and childcare, many of them couldn't work. So we were all, all of a sudden, quickly faced with a lack of people to provide care. And those people needed to be staying at home. And then, right away, there was an impact on the surgeons because they could not operate. And then there was a huge impact because patients just didn't want to come to the office. So we had to essentially furlough almost sixty to seventy percent of all our employees, which was quite painful and it was very, despite what was happening, it was very hard for a lot of them because of the economic hardship it was going to cause for that. And when all this happened, you know, it's a mess in terms of how you're supposed to get money to people. The unemployment office was overwhelmed. It was very stressful for a lot of the employees. So that was a very painful part of the process. The other was for, though many of the primary care physicians and the surgeons that had stopped working because they canceled elective cases, et cetera, we still had to take care of a large number of patients that have cancer and they're on treatment and they needed to be cared for. So that created two problems because of the social distancing. We had to create spaces that we normally wouldn't have to create. And so we had to limit the number of people that could come with a patient. And so for many, they were there by themselves only because of the physical space limitations that were imposed by the social distancing. So you could really feel the stress palpably by the patients when they were going through their treatments, being by themselves. And then I think more importantly, I think when all this happened, we didn't have any equipment. So we were asking our nurses to take care of patients at very close proximity and trying to give them the care and the radiation therapist being very close to patients and trying to deliver all this care without proper equipment. And so it shows you how dedicated many of them were. They were willing to risk what they, their health, just to help these patients within protection, which, while this is going on, obviously made everybody very upset because, and I know this is not supposed to be a political conversation, but the true lack of communication and leadership and the utter bizarreness of the whole thing just made it that much harder, I think, for everybody to do what they wanted to do and try to take care of the patients they want to take care of. And if anything, it did build a lot of team morale and team support. So I think a lot of people are still affected. We fortunately have had very few patients come down with the infection. We unfortunately have had a few patients that have died from it while they had active cancer. We've only had one or two staff members infected with the virus. But thankfully, as Bob had mentioned, most don't get critically ill, but they were very sick. As Patty mentioned, I think we're all nervous because it's not gone and it's still here and it's going to come back more as things open up again. And we don't have an effective treatment and there's no vaccine. So I think the added stress over a period of time, I think, is beginning to take its toll on people. But everybody is, I think, for the most part, trying to do the best they can. And I would say, again, it's not the topic of this town hall meeting, but it will be, I'm sure, soon. What's now happening in the country just further exacerbates what many of us are feeling. So.
I think that, that there was, it's a tinderbox, this explosion. I mean, almost three months of isolation and quarantine. And then the experience of what we watched on TV with Mr. Floyd. And then the reaction, it's like it was the match that just made the whole thing explode. And as I've been watching the things on TV and seeing so many people not wearing masks and the close contact. I know there was, there were articles in the paper the last two days of what might we expect in the next couple of weeks from all this?
Yeah. So, and the last thing, I would agree with what Bob was saying about the telehealth visits. It's been a great bridge and it's been helpful. And it definitely has a place, but, you know, I think most of us grew up where you had a relationship with a physician or a caregiver, seeing the whole person in real life. So you could see how they walk. You could see their facial expressions. You could watch the body language. And then, you know, just physically touching somebody can have in itself some healing and bonding. So that's the thing that I think most of us miss quite a bit. And even when that happens, now it's behind a mask, which is very surreal in a sense. Now, I think the last thing is, right now, there's still a large number of people out there who unfortunately have had a lot of their care postponed because of all this, that carry a diagnosis of cancer and can't yet get their surgery or can't yet get their imaging studies or can't yet get, need to get things done so that they can get their care. So I think we're going to still see this affecting a large part of the population for a long period of time. I just don't see it going back to normal for a period.
Good. Well, thanks for your kind of bird's eye view and insight into what you're facing. I mean, we read somewhat about it, but to hear, you know, somebody who's actually involved in it is insightful for us. So thanks. Bob Buckley, do you want to? And just to let everybody know that in your upper right-hand corner, you have something that says speaker view. And if you click on that, then the speaker fills, you know, the whole screen. You can see the wine glass more clearly that way.
Hi, my name's Bob Buckley and I'm an orthopedic surgeon and Father John, thanks for asking me to be here. You know, I don't really know anything about the COVID-19 virus. In fact, I asked Father John to make me last, so maybe I can learn. In fact, I asked Father John to make me last, so maybe I can learn something on the way. In fact, I imagine most of my colleagues here are not even sure if I'm a doctor or not just an orthopedic surgeon. I work at Contra Costa County Medical Center, which is our county's safety net hospital. And primarily take care of an underserved community that has a lot of medical issues and a lot of social obstacles to getting care. And what I wanted to talk about are kind of the funny things that I have seen over the past two or three months that I just didn't really expect. Many of our patients are indigent or homeless. And both Bob and Tim have talked about telehealth. And our experience is it's really difficult to have a telehealth conversation with a patient if they don't have a telephone. So it's the little things like the patient doesn't have enough money to take the bus to come to the clinic because they've been living paycheck by paycheck and shelter in place. They've lost their job. Or they don't have enough money for the gas to go to the clinic. Or they have so many medical problems and addiction issues and social issues or are unable to speak English that they can't even get to the clinic without a person, family member, taking them and that family member has to work. Or they are at home with children and because they've been using school, not only for school and daycare, they have no option but to stay at home because they can't afford daycare. So it's what I have seen as an orthopedic surgeon is people not making it to the office, not being able to connect with people on the phone because they don't have phones and certainly not doing any type of Zoom, being able to actually look at patients. So many of my patients have no access to the internet whatsoever. And I see a community that if they do come to our hospital, they're really at risk because of their, all their underlying medical issues that are grossly undertreated. So, you know, I don't take care of people with COVID problems. I take care of people with orthopedic problems. But over the last two or three months, it's really been difficult to take care of anybody because I can't talk to them. I can't get them into the clinic. And I really can't do a whole lot when they're there because the things I do, administer cortisone injections and things like that, or immune suppressives and can lead to further infections. So really been, I had my hands tied behind the back for a couple of six weeks now. And, and I think as Tim pointed out, as things are loosening up and people are coming to the clinic, back at work, there is just this mountain of care that we're behind on that we have to catch up on with our MRIs and our, just our orthopedic evaluations. And, and all of the things that have just been put off for six weeks, it didn't go away. Total joint replacements are not deemed essential surgeries. And boy, if you can't walk around because your hip hurts too bad, you might think it's an essential surgery. And we've just started that back up. And I get daily calls, you know, when is my surgery going to be? Because we are so backed up. In terms of our safety as physicians, it's been pretty crummy there. For a while, we ran out of disinfectant and we're using soap from the bathroom with towels. For a while, we didn't have enough masks or gloves. We were behind in every regard. We have no social spacing at the office whatsoever. We don't have the room. So it's really, in the beginning, when it was scary and the curve of deaths was going up, it was, it was a frightening time. But you know, I'd have to say that for me, this has been a great experience in terms of being able to maybe become a better doctor and reach out to people and not just be an orthopedic surgeon. So, yeah, I don't take care of COVID patients. I just take care of the indirect effects of COVID and the, and the shelter in place issues. And so I don't, I've actually not even seen a COVID patient. But I have seen the effects of shelter in place and I have seen the effects of the medically underserved and how, how damaged the community in Richmond and how damaged the community in Pittsburgh is from this, from this virus.
Well, thanks. When I asked you to come on, I, you know, recognized having been in your office many, many times and in Walnut Creek for five of those joint replacements. I know what it means to want it to happen soon. And when you said that you don't deal with the COVID, but you deal with the impact of COVID, I never anticipated that you would give us that insight into, you know, our impoverished brothers and sisters and how it's impacting them. I've said many times, for a lot of us in our area, COVID is an inconvenience. But you're demonstrating it's much more than that for, you know, people less fortunate than we are. So thank you. What I'd like to do is have a chance to, I'm sure people have some questions that they might, you know, like to ask. All you have to do is unmute yourself and, you know, raise your hand and speak up and we can answer that. I did want to say that yesterday in terms of how COVID impacts us as a Catholic Christian community in La Mirinda, I had a Presbyterian Council meeting, which is a board of clergy, elected clergy that are consultants to the bishop. And we met yesterday morning in a distance meeting on site at the cathedral, but all with masks and all six feet away from one another. And it was interesting because the bishop had said, we were talking about the reopening of churches. And the bishop said that obviously we aren't going to do anything until the Contra Costa Health Department says that we should. In fact, he even asked us, if they don't, should we ignore them and open anyway? And there was no priest in the group that was interested in any, in doing that at all, which I was happy to hear. And I think the bishop realized, he said he's gotten very few calls from parishioners and the dioceses saying, you know, when you open up the churches and we want to get back. And he also said he has gotten no requests from any of the priests. I think we recognize the seriousness of this virus. And, you know, the comparison that, well, they called, you know, the liquor store or the grocery store essential service, but not churches. We know that our faith is essential to us. We also know that our faith is not confined to a building. When you go to a liquor store or to the grocery store or to CVS, you go in and you come out rather quickly. In church, that would not be the case. So we will open again, but it will be with very strict limitations. Many of us on listening now, 65 and over, will be encouraged not to participate. And I want to hear some reinforcement from that, from Bob and Tim and Patty and Bob, so that these parishioners can hear that it's not, you know, that mean old priest, that this is a reality that we have to face. So questions that you might have of any of the doctors with us? Dennis? You unmuted there?
Searching for it. The question I have is, you know, as the death rate from COVID-19 seems to be fairly steady, the one thing that I've never really heard is for those patients that, that are fortunate enough to survive, how compromised do they remain after their survival? You know, because I, I just can't imagine that the attack on their organs or lungs and such is going to allow them to regain their old life.
Patty, could you speak to that?
Yes, that's a good question. Actually, it depends on the severity of their illness. And some patients, so it's like a wide spectrum of severity, starting from the very mild to the very severe and fatal effect of the virus. And some patients do get really debilitated depending on what kind of medical problems they also have. It's what we call comorbidities, such as if you have lung issues and if you have other medical problems such as high blood pressure, diabetes. And sorry, I just have to put this out there, age is the big factor. So the more advanced the age is, then we've seen greater impact on the health and the recovery time sometimes is, it takes longer. So some patients who are requiring a lot of oxygen or who were on the ventilator, meaning the breathing machine, and they required intensive care units day during the course of their illness, then you expect them to be more debilitated physically, meaning they're very deconditioned, requiring sometimes they don't go straight to home and they require going to rehab. And they require oxygen support. And some patients, even though they didn't come in requiring oxygen, they end up requiring oxygen after their hospital stay. So those are just a few examples of the spectrum of the severity of illness that one can see, that I've seen to taking care of the patients.
Thanks, Patty.
Mother, I have a question.
Yes.
Mary Jo Brady. I was just, I have a question about testing. Bruce and I are definitely over the age of 65 and we're following the rules. We don't have any symptoms. Should we be tested? And if so, where is a good place in Lafayette or Contra Costa County to be tested?
Well, I can answer that question. The tests that are available are the nasal swab test to determine if you have active COVID-19. And then there's the blood test to determine if you have antibodies. So the question is, should you get tested? It all depends. If you have absolutely no symptoms, then I would argue, no, you don't need testing at all. If you are thinking of, you know, it's a very important family event and someone really wants you to go visit some family member and you would like to say, hey, you know, just to be extra sure, I'm going to have my nose swabbed a few days before I leave. So they know for sure I'm not carrying COVID-19 into their home. So I have plenty of, you know, patients who come in for that very reason. They have an important family event coming up and they want to tell grandma, hey, I'm safe. You know, I don't have COVID-19. The question of whether to get checked for antibodies is still an open question. There's plenty of interest in it by patients who tell me that, hey, I had an illness way back in December or November or January. I didn't go see anybody, but looking back on it, maybe I had COVID and I'd like to know if it was. So can you check my antibody? So those are two typical reasons why you may want to get tested.
Thanks, Bob. That's helpful because I think that's a question on a lot of people's minds, you know, should I get tested? And, yeah, as you say, if one doesn't have symptoms, if one is in good health and so on, there really isn't an absolute need or reason.
And the test is available at a variety of places now. It's available at some urgent care centers, so StatMed, for example, in Lafayette, we offer those tests. And Quest Labs, I believe, offers the antibody test directly to consumers. So you could go on the Quest Lab website and they'll, for a fee, bring you in, draw your blood and tell you if you have antibodies.
Thank you.
Also, the counties run tests.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Someone argued, someone was saying today, well, you know, I could get tested today and they could say I don't have it. And then tomorrow I have it. Because it's only good for that moment.
Right. Well, you also have to consider your clinical symptoms. So if you really don't have any symptoms at all and then you get your nasal swab test and it's negative, you know, and you didn't have any symptoms last week and you don't have any symptoms for the week after, well, chances are very low that we've missed it.
I have a question. And it's a two-part question. And the first part is what scares you the most about this, possibly in light of the events around all of the protests around the world? And the second part is what gives you hope?
I've been answering a lot of questions, so I'll leave that open. The other panelists.
Hey, Tim.
So what scares me the most, I think, is two things. One is, as the others have all mentioned, it can affect anybody at any time. And we still don't know, aside from these comorbidities, we still see a lot of people die from this. And we had, again, I don't want to go into details, but I took care of, been taking care of a patient and he's very upset because his brother, who is 40, with virtually no medical problems, living in Richmond, got the infection and died within a day. So there's just so much we don't know about this and we don't know why some people get so sick so quickly and then just succumb to it. So when you see then this, again, just an opinion, where things are opening and people are not wearing masks and are not being careful, you just don't know who's going to do what. And the fact we don't know enough is very scary. I mean, we just don't know enough about this virus to act appropriately or treat it appropriately. So that's my, my fear that at any point in time, any one of our patients or any one of our staff that care for patients can die from this. The hope is that I think despite, again, not to make political statements, but despite lack of leadership at a certain level, there's a lot of people that still are working very well together that still care about each other. And I'm just hopeful that that ground swell and that ground movement is enough to carry through this.
Thanks, Tim. Bob Buckley, you work in a very difficult setting there in Richmond, from what you described. What elements of hope do you have for your situation in general? And particularly with this, our current virus?
I think that the COVID virus has called to our attention the vast socioeconomic divide in this country and the inadequate care that poor people have available to them. And I think we've all known that's a problem. Now we're seeing it more starkly. And I do think that perhaps the riots that are occurring now are much broader than just murder someone, but perhaps really an outgrowth of this socioeconomic divide that has become apparent because of the, or more apparent because of the virus. So I'm hopeful for some social change.
Thanks.
John?
Yes, Carl.
Yes. Just picking up on, Dr. just said, my field is education. And along with medicine, education is affected by the socioeconomic divide, has been for decades in California. has been for decades in California. And it leads to unemployment, it leads to crime, all sorts of things. But I have another question about the possibility of telemedicine. And my experience is that for to aid in diagnosis, when you, when I go to my primary, all he wants to know is my body weight, my temperature, blood oxygen and blood pressure. And then what's missing is his stethoscope. So how can we look at the the possibility of improving the diagnostic data using telemedicine?
Well, I'm aware that there is technology out there that allows us to have a patient apply a device to their chest and we could actually listen to their lung sounds via a video visit. I haven't had the experience with it, but I think the technology is there.
Good.
So, yeah, we could legitimately listen to a patient's heart and lungs by the patient holding the electronic stethoscope up to their chest. I'm all for that. The more information I can obtain, the better. Interesting question. Makes me think more that I want that.
Any other questions?
Father John, this is Tim again.
Yes, Tim.
I would echo what Bob said about the what's happening now in this showing that the true inequalities that do exist. I mean, I think Patty can attest to it. She practices in Antioch, Pittsburgh. That's an underserved community. We have St. Leandro Hayward. There's a lot of underserved people and there is a lot of this economic inequality, which transcends a lot of other parts of day-to-day life, like education, healthcare. And I think we're going to see far rippling effects from all this on all those fronts. But I would agree with Bob, it it's really unforgivable what's happened.
I always worry about us here in our area that we, that's why it's so important to hear from people like you. And we do have so many people in the community, so many people that are here among the fifty of us on this Zoom call that are are doing things to bridge that gap, you know, working with various agencies, volunteering, you know, working with the homeless, helping with the education, our participation in Shelter Inc. and in Hope Solutions and other kinds of organizations and agencies. But even with that, too often, I think our area can be a kind of a bubble and remove us from some of the realities that you're describing. Other questions, anybody? Yeah, Marie? Maria?
Yes, my question is, you hear that we should expect a resurgence in the fall and winter months. And I'm just curious how the profession is bracing for that and in particular, the overlay with the flu. I mean, you know, because people are going to automatically go to worst case and what what kinds of steps is the profession taking to help hold our hands or mitigate or whatever the the fear and everything else that's going to present when that happens?
That's a good question because right now, the list of probable diagnoses when patients come in with a cough and a fever is relatively short. Once you get into the flu season, that becomes a lot more difficult. And so patients could come in with a sore throat, a cough and a fever in the middle of summer and you go, well, I know it's not the flu. This year, it's not the flu. And so you just take that off the list. And the flu kills people, kills lots of people every year. So when we do get into the winter season, I mean, I can foretell, we'll be testing patients for the flu, for strep, for COVID virus, all in one sweep, to try to figure out as quickly as we can what they really have and give them directions. It also becomes critically important for their job because in order to get back to work after they came down with what might have been just a common cold, well, now, do I have COVID-19? Will my boss let me back in until I prove that I didn't? And so it gives that whole layer of complexity over what was a simple common cold. So the future looks very complex indeed and treacherous going into the next flu season. And we have to do a lot of testing.
So we are in it for the long haul. Could I, that's an accurate thing to say, doctors?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Doctor, on these tests, COVID-19, there's an error rate. If you test negative, I heard that there's a five to fifteen percent error rate. Is that correct?
Yes, there is. The, you're going to be more accurate if you wait at least three to four days into the into the fever and then do the test.
Okay, let me ask you this. If there's an error rate on a negative test, what's the error rate on a positive test? I said, I had a doctor tell me there's no error rate on a positive test. But how can that be? If you have an error rate on a negative test, there has to be an error rate on a positive test.
We don't really know yet because we haven't done enough testing among the normal population to know the answer to that question. Certainly, there can be.
I was actually told by a doctor, there there isn't a negative rate on a positive test. And I said, well, it doesn't make sense. There has to be.
Yeah. The, depending on the test, the the false negative rate with the nasal swab seems to be very low, seems to be around two percent. But we need a longer stretch of time using the test with real people, with thousands and thousands of people to really know.
Doesn't that depend on the lab that you use, if it's in-house? Or you send it out, there's differences between the labs?
Well, the FDA is sorting these out. So in order to obtain what's called an emergency use authorization, you have to pass muster, at least with the review panel of the FDA that shows with the available studies of that test. It's a good test. It has a low false negative rate, low false positive rate. No test is going to be perfect. But it's going to take another year or more before they do scientific controlled studies to really tell us what the numbers actually are. So the next year, it's like the wild west.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Could I, Greg, if I could say a few things? One is, what Bob was saying is the testing, there's two tests. The one is for the infection and one is for the antibody. The test for the antibody, I'm sorry, the test for the infection, if it's positive, it's a very sensitive and specific test. But it does have what they call that false negative, where you have the infection, but the test misses it. The bigger problem is the antibody testing is so new that there's a lot of things that can give you positive antibodies, but you've never had the infection. So other coronaviruses can do it. Other inflammatory conditions can give you this false test for the antibody testing. But if you have a positive test by PCR for the infection, you 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 have the infection. I mean, it's like ninety-nine point something percent. The big problem is being the false negative for that test, for the infection.
Okay. Well, thank you.
The two words that I heard tonight that stick out for me is complexity and uncertainty. And I hate to leave on that note, but that's the reality that we're facing. And it's specific to this, but when we wake up in the morning, do any of us know what the day unfolds for us? And would you say that complexity is a description of human life? And that uncertainty is part and parcel of what it means to be a human being? I think that's where our faith is so important to us. And the words of Christ, "Into your hands, Lord, I command my spirit." And that ought to be a prayer always on our lips, but especially in a time like this. Into your hands, oh, Lord, we commend our spirits because life is complex and every day has uncertainty to it. But we trust that we can believe in the simplicity of the love of God. There's nothing complex about that, it just is. And we can believe in the certainty of God's love for us. So I hope we can carry that with us, you know, tonight and into the rest of the time that we're going to be facing this together. I really appreciate Bob and Tim and Patty and Bob for being with us. You know, when they say our doctors and medical professionals are heroes, you have always been my heroes in the parish. That's why I wanted to have everybody have a chance to hear from you. I want to say that next week, Dr. John Pellen will be with us. John will be calling in from Washington DC where he lives. He works with the State Department. John is a Foreign Service Officer and a Senior Health Advisor. I've known John for perhaps thirty years. He, his career has been spent in infectious disease. In particular, in the last twenty years, ten years ago, he traveled a lot all over the world, especially to Africa with AIDS work, helping countries develop programs to combat AIDS and responsible for getting American funds to other countries. And in fact, Dr. Bricks is his superior. So I think it'll be interesting to hear from him. He's going to speak about, under the, understanding the pandemic from global to local. So I hope that you'll all join us again. Again, thank you to Bob and Patty and Bob and Tim for being with us. And I hope you all have a wonderful evening. And we'll see you Sunday at nine thirty or eleven thirty for the Feast of the Holy Trinity. And in the meantime, have a peaceful night. And Kristoff, if you unmute us.